We will do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands and want a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm able to hear you back here. Um, okay. I'm not a good shouter. Maybe there's a front seat right here.
Is that a microphone?
That's for the camera, I mean for the system.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, we'll try, but I do tend to sort of fall down. We need approval of our agenda. And I did have, I guess I'll take a motion on that if anybody will...
So moved.
Thank you Liz. And Sam seconded. I personally have a change that I would like to put in and I would like to exchange seven and, item seven and eight because I think the inclusion topic, oh actually, I'm sorry, eight and nine, is it seven and eight or eight and nine?
No, maybe seven and eight.
I wanted to exchange the inclusion topic with the district equity work update.
So flip seven and eight?
Yeah. I had rearranged my agenda, so I have the wrong numbers. So, we are going to go into, does anybody else have any changes? Nope, okay. Then I'll call that question. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
I'm so accustomed to doing this.
I know. I'm sorry.
Whatever. Thank you. Now, we will do the approval of minutes from 6:16. We can do the regular minutes first. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you Liz.
I'll second.
Thank you Lynn. Does anybody have any changes or additions or things that should be taken out? No? Okay. I'll call the question then. All in favor of approving the 6:16 regular minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Do the same for executive session. Is there a motion?
Sure.
Thank you Lynn. BJ, was that your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, BJ seconded. Does anybody have any changes to the executive session minutes?
Nope.
Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will move on. We're moving into the public input and announcements. I did want to make clear, everybody who's going to make a public statement should go up to the podium because otherwise you won't have a microphone and it won't be included on the PEG TV recording. I also wanted to read a statement first just to clarify. Before I start the public comment portion of tonight's meeting, I would like to correct a misunderstanding that has resulted from comments made at the last meeting regarding policy E4, which refers to risk management. It was brought up as both a concern and a reason to table the vote to fly a particular flag at Mill River at the start of school. Out of concern that we had inadvertently not properly followed a board policy, we asked our legal counsel to comment as well as asking Visbit, which is the insurance trust that the school gets their property and liability policies from, whether any vandalism or damage would be covered by the district's property and liability policy. Now, this is a portion of the attorney's response. "I read the policy. It requires consideration of risk and the purchase of insurance where appropriate. I believe the district has satisfied those two concerns. As I recall, the district discussed with me the flag policy before it was adopted. The board was educated about the legal exposures that could exist with raising flags and the language adopted in the policy. The board, after considering that risk, adopted the flag policy." And then there were a couple of other paragraphs discussing specifics. "In sum, the policy instructs the board and the district to be mindful of risk and financial exposures. The district must, under Vermont law, purchase some insurances. Under the policy, it should buy insurance for risk that it cannot reasonably retain or feasibly retain, that meant into our budget. The district has satisfied its duties under the policy by ensuring the risks presented by most of its operations. To the extent that some risks cannot be insured, the district must always be mindful under the policy before incurring risk. I suspect that there is no uninsured risk associated with the flag policy. I personally also called Visbit, our insurance carrier, and they assured me that if there is any property or liability damage at the school, those damages would almost certainly be covered under our policies with the $2,500 deductible." And I hope this puts people's minds at rest. But now, we can start public comment. Our first speaker is Ken Fredette. I would also ask that you please introduce yourself for the camera and the town of residence.
Can I make a quick comment?
And, yes.
To any speakers, Adrian has asked me to just keep time. If you are speaking, when it gets to 20 seconds remaining, I'll just give you a little wave as a signal so that you're aware of where we are on time.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to revisit the protocol for public input at open meetings in Vermont, which I spoke to about, which I spoke to at your meeting on Sanco de Mayo. But first, you veteran board members, let me say welcome back to in-person meetings. And to the freshman class, I'll just say, welcome. You've all done a remarkable job accomplishing good work under difficult circumstances, and I hope you'll find in-person meeting even more productive. There's only one public service mentioned to be provided to the people, mentioned in the constitution of the state of Vermont: education. There's nothing about roads, there's nothing about water systems, there's nothing about anything else, just education. And in my mind, that makes you board members and administrators and teachers and staff in this room arguably have the most important jobs of anybody here. It's an awesome responsibility and it's also an awesome privilege. As board members, you are elected by the people and are accountable to them. Vermont statutes I referred to at your meeting on May 5th, and I have them on the bottom of this sheet here for you. Provide for citizens to express opinions on matters being considered by the board, and historically, board chairs, including the current and previous chair of this board, have always provided for a bit of extra latitude to ensure concerns are heard. Still, on occasion, we hear from some that opt to step outside the bounds of propriety. I implore you, board members, to not be distracted by the noise generated by those promoting adult agendas. If you always stay focused on the kids first, other things will fall into their proper places. More seasoned board members already know this, and you newer board members will learn it soon if you haven't already. Thank you all for what you do, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fredette. Art Peterson?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Despite what, Madam Chair, you said about the risk policy, E4, I want to read the policy and let the folks decide whether this board has done enough to look at risk, look at the many risks associated with raising this flag and developing a flag policy. So, the policy is E4. It was adopted in June of 192016, and this is what it says. "It is the policy of the district to minimize risk to the district as it discharges its responsibility for properly managing the resources of the school system. This responsibility includes concerns for the safety of students, employees, and the public, as well as concerns for protecting the system's property from loss." And here's, here's the big line here. "No new program, policy, or procedure will be adopted or approved by the board without first giving careful consideration to the school system's risk exposure." I want this board, I'd like to receive an answer back from the board, I don't care from who, maybe as a board, totally, to tell me where in your meetings you ever talked about the many risks associated with this flag. Let's talk about a couple, okay? First of all, you've got a town, the town we live in, I'm sorry, my name's Art Peterson from Clarendon, I don't know if I said that, but town of Clarendon, thinking about trying to pull out of the district, okay? I'd say that's a pretty major risk. 2020 to 2021 school year saw a 9% to 10% drop in enrollment, partially at least due to the flag issue. There's a percent, that would give a perception that this district is failing, okay? And what does a failing district do? It stops things, it affects things like property values, it possibly eliminates the, a number of tuition students. Tuition students are like 16,000 apiece. You lose a couple and you're 32,000, 35,000 bucks in the hole. We can't afford to lose tuition students over something like a flag at this school. Removal of athletic sponsorships in the, in the school. Some of the businesses may back out, I don't know. And just maybe a negative vote in March on the school budget based on raising the flag. Okay, so that's one thing. There's another bylaw, number nine, school buildings. "The board will recognize and respect the long-term financial investment and community relationship that each town and Mill River Union High School District 40 has with its school building." There has to be a relationship between the building and the use by the board and the town. And that is, that has not happened. And the final thing, we've been muted for months now, okay? The final thing I want to say, is there, are there any military vets on the board here?
Yeah. On the floor, there is.
Okay. I want to say this, for us military veterans, and there's some, I know combat veterans sitting here, flying any flag on that flagpole with a US flag is an insult. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not signed up for that, so.
She just arrived.
Well, Barbara can let it sign up. Anna Majorell. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't understand your note.
I was just gonna add that.
Yep, that's fine.
Well, I'm sick standing up here talking. I hate this sort of thing. I hate the microphone. Oh, I'm Anna Majorell, Timmuth. But, anyway, that, that's a side point. So I'll start out by saying, I'm ashamed, this is the, only the second school board meeting I've ever attended in person. I really should have been more on top of things all these years, so I apologize for that. I hate conflict, I hate getting involved in controversial things, but when, I received an email last June saying that you all were gonna fly the BLM and pride flags, I knew I couldn't just stand by and watch this radical movement infiltrate our education system. BLM is an anti-American communist sympathizing social and political group. It seeks to dismantle the Western view of family, which I, and I know many of us, value greatly, and to defund the police. It does not help black lives. It in fact hurts black communities. Their defunding, their defund the police movement has created a huge increase in violent crimes in cities across our nation. That has resulted in hundreds of black lives lost and even children. I was just saying today, I just, I'm almost in tears when I hear the small children who've been shot and killed in cities, just playing outside in their yard. And I think it's real easy for all of us in our little rural communities to say, oh, Black Lives Matter, this is a great group. It isn't. I mean, defunding the police is just horrific. I said other things here. BLM protests have destroyed minority neighborhoods and businesses, and we're planning on flying this flag because somebody asked. When you raise a flag, that's an outward representation of who you are or what you believe in. It's the same at a public school. If we fly that flag, which I guess we're planning to, we're flying a flag that says we are all communists, we, we support communism, and we support rioting and vandalizing, and I know that's not true about a lot of the students in this school. All the students are Americans and Vermonters, so the flags that are out there represent the students that are here. Any other flag should not be included. I'll end with a quick story. My 10-year-old son went to a Bible camp yesterday. While there, one of the counselors displayed a lovely white flower from the grounds of the church. She talked about the beautiful flower and how it was created by God and such beautiful things that he creates for us to enjoy. One of the children raised their hand and said, "That's racist. Why would you show us a white flower? Why wouldn't you tell us about black flowers? This is racist. What are we doing to our kids? Where do you all think this is really gonna end? Where do you think, how do you think this is gonna help anybody teaching us this stuff? Teaching them this stuff?"
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you for your time and thank you for serving.
I am not sure, Mike, is that, is this you, under, about number four down?
Oh yeah, sure.
Okay. Mike Fowler.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself. I saw you in the audience, so I, your handwriting. Where'd you go to school?
Hi, everybody, I'm Michael Fowler. I went to Timmuth Elementary School and I barely graduated Mill River High School. That's no joke. I have two children at Timmuth currently and one in Mill River. I am on the committee for, oh, what is it? The advisory committee to the Timmuth School. I'm a member of the Four Winds Program that brings in nature-based education to the classrooms, and I'm a participating member in the Timmuth Parents Club. And, you know, I want to echo Anna's statement there. I think she really, she has a lot of really good points, and, you know, when you put a flag as decisive, as divisive as the BLM flag, and by, at this, at this point, you know, I think we all understand that it is a political organization, you know? And so what you're asking, what you're, what you're trying to, you know, persuade us to be okay with is putting a political organization on our school underneath, you know, our state flag, our American flag. And it's, it's, you know, and I don't want to get into, you know, what is right, what is wrong necessarily, but it's, to a lot of people, it is very, very insulting to have that, you know, to have that organization that, you know, organization that is rooted in Marxism, you know? I mean, that's, and that's what I'm looking at, and I have had, you know, thanks to the slowdown lockdown, I've had a lot of time to, you know, just kind of peruse and learn about Karl Marx and learn about socialism and communism. And those are not things that I want my children being indoctrinated with, you know? Like, I really believe that, you know, we have a constitution and it's excellent, it's an amazing document. And it's trying to subvert that, and by putting the BLM flag up, you know, you're saying, you know, you're saying that, you know, everything that this country has stood for, for, you know, hundreds of years, you know, we don't like it anymore. And it is, it's an insult to the veterans, the people who have died for this country, who have worked for this country. This is an amazing place, you know? And, you know, my children are part of this community, I am part of this community, and the, you know, when I have to drive in, and, and I do, I explain to my children as much as I possibly can, you know, what these things are, where they come from. And they do, you know, they, they come directly from Marx, you know? And that is not, that is undeniable fact. So why would we be putting this up on our schools? You know, this is, this is public education. Ideally, you know, when I was going to this school, there were some excellent teachers, there were some really, some absolutely phenomenal people. I did not know what their political persuasion was, you know? And that, in my, my ideal of a teacher is someone who I don't know what their political leanings are. I think that is the basis that, you know, as a board, you guys should really be looking at for teachers, and, you know, that way, everyone has a, an appreciation for learning as opposed to just being, you know, one side or the other. And I hope to, you know, become a, you know, continuing member of this group. The last couple of meetings I've gone to, I think I was by myself, that was a few years ago, and, you know, from everything that seems to be happening, I have a suspicion that, you know, we are going to be getting more and more people showing up, talking about these issues. So we, we probably should get comfortable with talking about them and having, you know, discussion in civil manners. So, thank you.
When Mr. Younts goes like that, that means 20 seconds. So, we don't keep going over. Thank you.
Arn Majorell, I'm from the town of Timmuth. I have five children, one that graduated from the Mill River Union High School, for that would be in the, in the district, but we don't have them because of the flag, speaking of risk assessment. By flying the flags, you are imposing your political beliefs on our community. Our community clearly said no to this when 500 signatures were petitioned against raising the flag on our public campus. We have two flags that represent every single person. They represent liberty and justice for everyone in this country. Does that mean we're perfect, that an individual police officer or judge or even a court doesn't always do what is right? No. When that happens, we need to hold those individuals accountable, those officers, judges, courts accountable and expose them. The point is, our flag represents our constitution, which codifies liberty and justice for all, better than any government in the rest of the world. Millions of Americans have served in our military. When a young man or woman goes into the military, and I'll even ask, I'll put the question right out to veterans and even the combat veteran that's in the audience, when you did that, did you say, "I'm serving for whites," or "I'm just serving for the blacks," or "I'm just serving for Hispanics," or "I'm just serving for Christians," or "Jews," or "Muslims," or even atheists? Or did you do it to serve everyone? Did you do it to serve your country?
Americans.
Exactly.
That's right. They're serving a country that stands for liberty and justice for everyone. These liberties include public discourse and debate, similar to what's happening tonight. We being here today, that's a testimony to this truth. Communist countries do not tolerate these things, yet that's exactly the government ideologies BLM organization aligns itself to. Everyone here, every student, every teacher, is represented by the American flag and the Vermont flags. They're a symbol of our constitution and unite us as Americans and Vermonters. In our community, there's a variety of political views, religious, and worldviews. It would be inappropriate, at best, to fly any flag other than these in our public campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majorell. We have Barbara Peterson on the list next. Please don't forget your name and town.
Barbara Peterson from Clarendon. I've never ever done this before, so I do want to say that I was an educator here for many years, 30 years, and, but I, I had four children went to school here and they all got an excellent education, they're well-prepared to go on in their life, and they're doing very well. However, at this point, out of my 12 grandchildren, seven of them are unwilling refugees from the school district because you are trying to put up communist ideals with the American flag. And that's all I want to say. Start paying attention to education. You spent a year and a half on the stupid flag issue when you could be doing education. So pay attention to education, stop with the indoctrination.
Or Lee? I'm sorry, did I mispronounce your name?
Lee.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm from Clarendon. From our own equity policy, equity goes beyond formal equality where all students are treated the same. Achieving equity may require an unequal distribution of resources and services. Equity involves disrupting inequitable practices, acknowledging biases, employing practices that reflect the reality that all students will learn, and creating inclusive multicultural school environments for adults and children. And this, this I didn't have in here, but if we have to do that, every darn one of you has failed our kids. Every one of you have failed our children. I found this, looking up, and this kind of makes sense. A structured classroom often translates to a safe classroom, one where students can enjoy themselves and focus on learning. It is, in a structured learning environment, students are more likely to thrive and experience personal and academic growth. Too often, teachers provide students with freedoms they can abuse, and I can see that happening here. Risk management, they've touched on this, minimize risk to the district. Responsibility includes concern for the safety of students, employees, and the public, as well as concern for protecting the system's property from loss. These policies expose concern not only for our students in our community, I believe they violate our moral responsibility to our students. When we decide to create division and preferential treatment for any reason, whether it's skin color, religion, gender, or a flag we fly, we create peril, not only in our school, but everywhere we send these students. When we fly the BLM Marxist flag, we create division based on skin color and our fundamental support of America. The purpose of this movement, an attempt to place a flag other than the Stars and Stripes on a public school, is a direct attempt to cause division not only in our community but throughout America. This will create problems within the school among adults and students who disagree with this being forced on them. This creates an environment for many problems. This will result in disagreements that resort to bad behavior and violence on our school grounds and towards our facilities. This goes completely against school policies and the USA. All men are created equal. We live in the best country in the world, as evidenced by those that risk life and limb to escape the very oppression of those that endorse socialism, communism, and Marxism. There is no need to teach reading, writing, and racism in our schools. Our children, regardless of color, are not racist, nor do I believe the parents in our community fit that description. Almost done. Stats on Mill River High School in Vermont prove our district needs educational improvement. CRT and BLM are two things that should never infiltrate our educational system and poison our children's minds. There is no room for teaching division. Based on all information I have accessed, it clearly proves that every minute in our schools should be concentrated on reading, writing, arithmetic, and history. Parents, it's time to stand up, speak out. Our center, our schools should be centers of education and not indoctrination. And I thank you.
We have, I believe it says Joe Buffum.
Tom.
Tom Buffum?
No, the town.
Oh, from Timmuth?
Joe from Timmuth?
I think it says Joe.
I think so.
He's not speaking.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I guess we have to have people print from now on. I have absolutely no idea who this person is.
Oh yeah, that's a tough one. And someone who didn't write their town down? Hard to read, no town.
Maybe a GH in the last name? Okay, I guess.
Which, which, wait.
Yeah, I mean, if you haven't been called on at the end, we'll call on you then, because I, sorry, I apologize. Bart... Yeah, I mean, if you haven't been called on at the end, we'll call on you then. Because I, sorry, I apologize. Bart Bonazinka?
Hi, my name's Bart Bonazinka from Timmouth. And I've lived in Clarendon and Timmouth for the last 40 years. And was here when this addition was built. And we put this through and fought for it and for the kids. I've got, we've had three kids graduate to hear from and be educated here at the Mill River High School. I think it's very important to academically or intellectually look at what a flag is. If you fly a flag, it shows what you stand for. It tells you what team you're on. It, depending on how serious this is, what your guiding principles are, or who you cheer for. Red Sox flag, Yankee flag, Pirates flag. You know, if a ship shows up with a Pirates flag on it, you better move all the women and children inside and some of the men. But, and if you've got a hammer and sickle on your flag, you're heading for real problems because you've got Gulags and Siberia and all kinds of places you can go, maybe Cuba. The BLM flag stands for significant problems. It is not a nice flag that's trying to help poor black people who are being abused by police. Whether that happens or not, and it pro, and I'm sure it does. It is a flag that represents, as has been documented in the, in the internet and everyplace else, that the founders and supporters were avowed Marxists who clearly do not want a capitalistic or a American system. They show their support for Cuba and Venezuela as people protest for freedom. They support Antifa and the burning of all the cities out west, as you know. I'm sure you've known that. They kill policemen and then they hide in Cuba, like Asada Shakur, who recently was declared a hero by BLM. They support defunding the police as the cities burn. They support getting rid of ICE, closing the prisons, and eliminating bail. The, what the flag stands for should represent the people and the programs and the, and the schools over which they fly. If we fly the Black Lives Matter flag, we're going to support CRT or Critical Race Theory, which in a nutshell says that all whites are racist and can't help themselves, starting at the age of three months, if you've read the articles. And they live only to oppress black people and keep them down. Blacks are, and that can occur unconsciously. Blacks are oppressed, victims, and cannot raise themselves up because the white person is keeping them down, even at the age of three months. This is systemic racism. And it's, it's not going to cure any racism. It's only going to make it worse. Basically, we've thrown Martin Luther King under the bus. We've spit in his face. And his statement, "I have a dream. I, I, I have a dream that my children, my daughters, will be judged by the content of their soul, not by the color of the skin." I challenge and dare this school board to take their own ideas and the Black Lives Matter flag down and put this to a vote, to all the students and all the taxpayers here in this area of Vermont, and see whether they will support this flag. Because this flag is over our school that I helped fund to the tune of $18,000 a year for 40 years. And therefore, we should have a vote on whether or not that flag flies. Because it represents everybody in this school, everybody sitting here, whether they like it or not, and you should find out whether they like it or not. I don't think you've got the nerve to run a referendum in the town, or even in the students, in an Australian ballot, and see who votes for this flag. Thank you.
Just looking for you. Halla Bonazinka.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Okay. Okay. The American flag displayed outside right now, that unites all of us, as does the state of Vermont flag. That unites us all. The Black Lives Matter flag will divide us. Why? Well, it's anti-white, it's anti-Semitic, it's anti-police, it is anti-American. And probably more important is, it will divide the students. It teaches them that it's okay to put people, black kids over here, white kids over here, Jews, you go over there. I mean, what if some poor kid has a parent, or two parents, who are police officers? Is that kid going to be harassed because his parents happen to be earning a living, protecting all of us? So what I'd like to do is to offer an example of, of an adverse student. This is a student, a 15-year-old white boy. This is just an example of what can happen if you put that flag out there. So this is a 15-year-old white boy who just happens to be born white because his mom is white and his dad is white. You know, no choice there, okay? He's a shy kid. He's unsure of himself, as many teenagers are unsure of themselves. Doesn't have many friends. Well, what happens? Some other kids start harassing him. They start bullying him. I think you're all aware of what bullying is. They start calling him a white supremacist, a racist. You have white privilege. Well, this kid is so shy. And I know some of you have worked in the school district. And this kid does not go to anybody. He doesn't go to a counselor. He doesn't go to a teacher. He doesn't tell his mom, he doesn't tell his dad. He doesn't share this with a friend. He just internalizes all of this. And he starts thinking, "Well, maybe I am a racist. Maybe I'm a bad person, you know, because, because I have white privilege." And so he starts, he starts doubting himself. And again, he's internalizing all this. He's not telling anybody about this. And then he starts hating himself. And he starts thinking, you know, "I'm not worth anything." This is called self-loathing. And what does this kid do? This 15-year-old boy decides to throw away God's greatest gift, his life. He decides to take his own life. He decides to commit suicide. And that is a terrible tragedy. And I know some of you here have experienced that. Thank you. And after the tragedy, and this is a, I'll try to cut it short. This is a tragedy. His parents begin to realize that there's a connection between his suicide and the fact that he was being bullied at school. And how do they do this? Well, social media. They have texts, they have emails, et cetera. And so the parents decide to school, I'm sorry, the parents decide to sue the Mill River Union School District. So this becomes not only a tragedy of this little boy losing his life, but this becomes a financial burden on every single taxpayer. I'm so sorry, on every single taxpayer. I wonder if the people on the board who have voted in favor of displaying the Black Lives Matter flag have considered any of these risks. And these are risks. The safety of our children and the finances of our district. Thank you for listening.
I would like to remind everybody, it is already 20 of 8, and we still have a long list to go. If you could please, at 3 minutes, stop speaking. Madison Aiken? And Vex Aiken? Okay. Well, Madison anyway.
Hold on one second. I appreciate my right to address the Board of Directors at Mill River Schools. Because of the pandemic and our need to continue to function as a society, we have learned ways to interact virtually. Although we are able to meet in person now, without a hybrid approach to meeting, we're supporting ableism. Members of our community should not be excluded from the benefits of engagement simply because able-bodied, able-schedule, able-transportation, able-economics, and able-childcare members are safe to meet here tonight, in person. Please instate a hybrid format for all community members, not just a viewing option on YouTube. I also use my time to thank the Board for the exhausting efforts it took to educate white members of our learning community about the experiences of our BIPOC community members. Thank you to the BIPOC and LGBTQ community members for your leadership. I have firsthand experience spanning decades of microaggressions towards community members of color. Raising BLM flags has helped people engage. The conversation about the BLM and Pride flags has motivated white folks to become politically active. We are an educational community, and we're doing the hard work right now. I've seen the impact in my social circles, on the road where I live, and with individual board members. Flags are very important. Symbols are important. Equity, representation, and inclusion is important, too. I'm here tonight because I learned that some people in our community with power have stated a concern about safety related to raising BLM flags. I know safety was addressed with the plan to raise the flags when that plan was in person. It seems odd to me that flying a flag is a safety concern, yet caring for our black and brown students doesn't seem to evoke the same kind of safety concern. This Board is fantastic. This learning community is inclusive. We have partners in the Rutland District, in the Woodstock District. We have support in the West Rutland and Proctor and GRSU District. We support, we have support at the state level. All students matter. All black students and students of color matter. All LGBTQ students and their families matter. Thank you for flying a flag that says "Our schools are safe and ready to learn and to grow together." I just want to remind everyone that BLM and the Movement for Black Lives are two totally different things. It doesn't seem to be apparent here to everyone. Thank you.
Vex, did you want to say anything?
I am Vex. I am from Clarendon. You guys are saying stuff without letting the kids decide if we can fly the flag. My teacher taught us fake history. I'm going to different school. I went to Wallingford. Now I'm going to Shrewsbury because they did not teach us real history. I am very disappointed in the school district for doing that to us. Thank you.
John McKenna, I'm from Clarendon. I want to first thank the members of the Board that voted to raise the Black Lives Matter flag. It's something that I've been personally involved in since the day that Montpelier raised theirs at their school. The Black Lives Matter flag shouldn't be divisive. It is a way of saying to our community members of color that we are welcoming, that the school is welcoming, that our community is welcoming to all people. There's nothing in Black Lives Matter that says only black lives matter. There's nothing in Black Lives Matter that doesn't allow for other lives to matter. It's just calling attention to the fact that our society is, has been showing for the last 400 years, 400-plus years, that black lives don't matter as much as everyone else's. And it's very important that we, as a community, show that we support people of color. And if you're really concerned about suicide rates, you really need to be concerned about our LGBTQIA+ community because they have a higher rate of suicide than any other community in the country. So, if you're really concerned about that, that's what you should be supporting. People of color, especially students of color, have a higher rate of suicide as well. They tend to perform less well in school because of the racism and microaggressions that they face every single day. And I'm proud of the school for raising a flag that says, "You are welcome and you are important." And as a former Board member, I can also say that risk was absolutely discussed in both the Policy Committee meetings, which, those minutes are available online, if you want to read them. They were also, risks were also extensively discussed in the Flag Committee that was created the first time this, the flags were approved. We probably spent the better part of one entire meeting talking about nothing but risk. So it has been addressed. It has been considered. It has been deemed to be acceptable risk. The only reason that there would be any risk is if people cannot control their violent urges to do something to deface public property or to do damage or harm to people and, and the school property. If you can't control yourself, that's on you, not on the school. Thank you.
Thank you, John. George Ambrose. George here?
So, yeah, back there.
Oh, good. Hey, George.
Good evening. I was attempting, I want to speak on a different topic tonight.
Would you come up to the podium? Okay. Okay.
I'm going to pass on this opportunity because what I needed to address has not come up as yet. And you have two groups that have different views on a topic. It's kind of sad that somehow a compromise couldn't be reached. Anyways, I wish the Board lots of luck in this coming year.
Todd Fillmore.
Good evening, folks. I'm Todd Fillmore from Shrewsbury. Forgive me, I'm always a little nervous when I speak. Speaking is not my forte. A year has passed, and the Board has once again voted to fly the divisive Black Lives Matter flag on school grounds. Many residents view this as a triumph. A couple have already spoken tonight. But is it really a triumph? Does the end justify the means? Let's look at the path that led us to where we currently stand. Last July, the Board denied similar flag requests from other residents in a secret discussion held in executive session and in clear violation of state open meeting laws. I challenged that illegal action and demanded a formal flag policy, which the Board then crafted, but the policy is a sham. Folks will probably disagree with me on that, but I suggest you read it. It's based on a draft from district lawyers to give pretense of student self-expression, when it's really a tool to allow the Board to fly flags of their choosing, while denying the First Amendment rights of dissenting students already protected by state law. A little further along in the process, Board Member Liz Filskoff insulted an Asian-American father and publicly attacked two residents as racists and white supremacists for dissent for the Black Lives Matter flag on school flag polls paid by their tax dollars. Vocal pro-flag Board Member John McKenna, who just spoke briefly just shortly ago, was unseated in March. And shortly thereafter, openly called two-thirds of the entire town of Clarendon racist because they voted against him. Racists. The Board also ignored, excuse me, I'm scratching this part. We also have a former Board Member Andy Richards Peale, who summarized last year's pro-flag vote as follows. He said, "We are saying, as a Board, that we, white people, are the problem." I read that in front of my eight-year-old grandson. Blonde-haired, blue-eyed. He burst into tears. I want you folks to dwell on that. "We, white people, are the problem." I don't think so. Then we come to the vote to replace Board Member George Ambrose, who just spoke briefly ago. That vote was marked by entirely partisan actions by Superintendent Dave Younts, Vice Chair Maria French, and Chair Adrian Raymond. With no Board discussion or authority, Maria French organized a quote candidate forum in violation of open meeting laws. Board Chair Adrian Raymond acted as a Board of One by denying a formal request from the town of Clarendon without any Board discussion or vote. An alarming violation of open meeting laws. I filed a complaint about these violations. But not surprisingly, the Board voted to ignore it. Adrian also made false, libelous accusations against five candidates running against her Board allies, who was forced to apologize. Lastly, it's important to note that the BLM flag represents both the, I'm almost done. The BLM flag represents both the idea and the organization that openly calls for defunding the police. A divisive and dangerous movement now endorsed by Mill River. Openly endorsed. You are putting that on your flag poll, on our flag poll. And even more visible demonstration of the divisive nature of these flags, I want folks to consider what transpired in the last meeting where the, the flag was actually voted to be, to be flown. The student requesting the flag simply dismissed the suffering and death of millions of people of Jewish ancestry to elevate her own sense of pain on that flag poll. That is exactly why you don't want this flag on that flag poll. Because what happens is immediately, the only thing that matters is the pain of the individual seeking that flag, that flag space, that coveted real estate. The Board spent a year focused on, I'm almost done. The Board spent a year focused on flying a divisive flag against the will of much of the community. But I want to emphasize this. But I want to emphasize this. I went back through the minutes over two years looking for any sign that any discussion of actual educational policy, curriculum, educational attainment, anything, there is nothing there. Two years. There are wonderful professionals in the Mill River District, but we have, my wife and I have totally lost faith in the leadership of this school district, and we are withdrawing our grandson from this district, and we will find other ways of educating our child. I thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Ed Knox?
Yes, you know, I'm short on time. The flag you were talking about that you're addressing...
Can you, can you hold on? Can you get right there?
I'm Ed Knox, Clarendon Springs. I graduated from here. Don't start the time. You requested my introduction. I have five kids, four of them...
Could you get behind the microphone so that you can be...
Four of them came to this school, along with me and my three siblings. You asked for this introduction. They all graduated here. One will graduate soon, one just graduated. Now, I grew up here. I'm very disappointed in this group. Why? Because, Mr. Fardett, I want to continue with where you started. They missed your point. The point was, you need to be educated. The flag that you were talking about is the American flag, the one that represents all colors, race, religion. If you put the BLM flag up there, I want the ALM flag. All my kids are Asian. But back to the point that you might be missing. Obviously, this is a divisive thing that's happening here. If you read your rules and policies and bylaws, you're actually supposed to create procedures and policies that don't allow this to occur, to occur. Why? Because you're not allowed to create a perception. Neither are you. Neither is any staff member of this school, neither is any teacher, whether it's religion or politics. It is no doubt that an organization may fly their flag with the American flag, either just below it or under it, or under the state flag underneath the American flag. That is allowed. What is not allowed is for a school to do something that creates a perception in the community that they are biased in one form or another, religiously or politically. What has occurred with the creation of your document is you have violated your own laws. You're all subject to be interminated, if you can believe that. You read the laws that allow you to do what you think you can do on this property. What you didn't read was the laws, because you're trying to serve, and I greatly appreciate the fact that you're trying to serve the community, but you're doing so outside of your authority and outside of your law, which says you cannot do this because it's political. The organization is political. We all understand that it's political. If you're going to do that, I want the RNC flag, and okay, the DNC flag, and okay, the independent flag. And while we're at it, I want Jesus Christ put on the front of this building. Because if you're going to break the political law, you're breaking the religious law. All lives matter. Amen, brother.
Good evening. Gail Gillum, Clarendon. Thank you for letting me speak. Policy C3 states, "It is the policy of the board to encourage public participation at its meetings and that the board benefits from public input and our expertise." C3 allows for two separate times that the public can request to speak, agenda and not agenda items. In May, I asked why this was not being followed. The answer from the chair, which I received, past practice, she said, "Past practice has put those two periods together." I don't disagree that to have current practice and policy, perhaps we need to revisit the policy to review how current practice aligns with board policy. I will leave that to the policy committee. BJ, I have not seen it on the policy committee agenda since May. Why is that?
Taking a note.
Just, okay, that's my question. Chair also stated, "When asked how the public gets answered, the public comment is just that," she said, "commentary on a particular subject. The board listens, and all commentary informs the board in its future actions." So I say to everyone that was here tonight, asking or making a commentary, if you want your questions answered, please email the school board at mrusdboard@millriverschools.org. Early spring, Mill River admin was asked for a copy of the curriculum. That copy still has not been received. Even though Andrew Jones resigned, I think that's what he did, resigned, shouldn't this info be readily available in a file to hand out? Federal Law 20 U.S.C. 1232H requires that it be done. I, tonight, am requesting a copy of last year's curriculum and a new one for the upcoming year, if there is one. I would like to compare them. And finally, I believe there still needs to be a risk management done on the raising of the flag. This vote has already caused division between students instead of uniting them. When asked about the risk assessment on June 16th, Dave Younts said E4 came under the fiscal category, so there was no need to have it done. So this, I don't understand, why is the tobacco prohibition listed under that same category? Why do you not want to minimize risk or have concern for the safety of students, staff, and the public? How is that considered fiscal? E4 states that no new program, policy, or procedure will be adopted or approved by the board without first giving careful consideration to the school's risk exposure. I personally would like to see that done. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Heather Kent. Before you start for a second. Gail was correct. If you would like specific answers to your specific questions, please submit them by email or in writing, and the board will respond.
Don't take that off my three minutes. All right. Heather Kent, Clarendon. First, I'd like to say that if a pirate flag appears on the horizon, keep this Irish woman on deck, because I can live a ray hook better than half you men. So I want to start by thanking the board for doing this very hard work and serving the community, and I see a lot of faces out there I really respect. I see the select board. Thank you for serving our community. I see a lot of my neighbors and my friends. Thank you for being here and participating in this democracy. And I want to tell you a little story. When I was 15, I saw my father cry for the first time. I walked into the room, and the reason he was crying is because he was reading my brother's He had his hands, big massive marine hands, Mike, you know what those look like? Pressed up against his eyes so hard, they left marks for days. Said I wasn't going to do this, but I cry when I'm mad. Statistically, many people have spoken about their grandkids today. Statistically, one of your grandkids is gay, and they are hearing this. And I pray to God that, I pray to God that they aren't. Because someday, they're going to go back and say, "Why did granddad not want to support me at school? Why did they not want me to be seen?" Because that's what those flags are. They're not a political statement. They are a statement to those kids saying, "We see you. We hear you. Hold on. Please, hold on." There's a saying, "That hell is truth that is discovered too late." And I'd like all of you out there to think about, not so much what those flags mean to you, not to think about so much what they represent and how much money you've put into the school and how angry it makes you. I want you to think of that. If those flags wave for 25 years, and one kid doesn't commit suicide because he saw that flag there, or she or they saw it and they knew that they were seen, then that was worth it to me. That was worth it for all the money I've put in here. It's worth it for all the time I've spent wasting our time again and again to come here and rehash this. It was worth it to me. If it was one kid, one, just one. And I also want to point out, a lot of them made about communism and the beginnings of the BLM, Muma as you see it. And I want to point out to all of my fellow Catholics and Christians out there, that if an organization was always with what it started with, we'd all be Jewish. So please, just consider what those flags mean to somebody else and not yourself. And thank you for all those who were respectful and kept time.
Thank you, Heather. Jonathan Miller?
My name is Jonathan Miller, and I live in Wallingford. I have a son who graduated from Mill River last year, two years ago, sorry, the COVID break. And I have two children who are enrolled in Mill River this year. I've had the privilege of working in education projects in 22 countries, and I've dragged my children and family through nine of them. We've lived there, and they've experienced education in other settings before we came and settled in Wallingford. And I just want to thank the board. I think they're doing something very courageous here in trying to create an inclusive atmosphere. Just from the perspective of someone who's been working and teaching and learning about education globally, we need to open out some of our parameters within Vermont, within the Mill River School District, and I see this as a step forward. Now, I can't speak to how accurate all the accusations are about some of the flags, but something has to be done. We have to have these discussions. And it's not enough to say we have an American way of doing things, and that sums it up, and we're done. I think we're at a starting point, a healthy starting point, but we do have to come together with these discussions over and over and over about what's not working in the system. How can we make a more perfect union? Because we aren't there yet. And I do worry about us giving up too soon and saying, "It's been good enough for me, good enough for the last 40 years," but that doesn't speak for the next 40 years, and it doesn't speak for all members of our community. So I'd like to see us continue this, to do the outreach and extend a little grace to each other to kind of hear the other opinion and see if we can create a solution together. Thank you.
We have Julie Patrossi.
I apologize, I'm not going to be very prepared. I thought I was just signing a paper that said, "I'm here." But I am Julie Patrossi, and I'm from Wallingford. And I'm not going to talk necessarily about the flags, but I have my own experience of what BLM has done for me. It has cost me over $5,000 in lawyer's fees. It has cost my child a lot of emotional damage, many hours at a neurotherapist's office to recover from what he experienced in this school district, based upon how faculty and staff dealt with him being harassed and bullied for two and a half years. He's white. Even though his father is 100% Italian, most of my children are dark. I have 11 of them, and I only have like four of them that are truly white. The rest of them are very, 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 very dark, darker than some black people. Got to say it. And they've all been picked on. And my white child was picked on, in particular by a black child, for years. And it was, it was okay by this faculty and staff. And at times, my child was pulled out of his classroom and begged to just admit that he said things that he did not say, so that they could start the process of discipline for him. And we fought it. And you know what? If the education that you're going to do, the new curriculum, is going to go this way where it teaches children that they need to allow their peers to suppress them, so that they have their opinion and they're not allowed to have their own, then this is going downhill real fast. And I really don't want to send my other eight children through this school system if this is where we're going to go. Because it's not where we need to go. It's not doing the children any good whatsoever if this is where we're going. I mean, how many more kids are going to commit suicide because they're the problem, like everybody has said? We don't know that. The reason why my children fight back when they're bullied is because I am their mother. That's all.
Dave Potter from Clarendon. It may be nearing the time for the Black Lives Matter flag-flying issue to move into the rearview mirror. The Mill River Board has taken testimony from all sides, weighed that testimony, and voted a decision on a very difficult issue. Mill River is not the first school district in Vermont to have done that. And life seems to have gone on just fine in those other locations, many of which are right here in Rutland County. So let's have the school board concentrate on what's important going on into the future, and that's to provide the resources, the framework, and the guidance for educating our children. Throughout the years, various Mill River graduates have gone on to some of the finest universities and colleges in the country. They've gone into the military, they've gone into the workforce, they've gone into the trades. And this past year was no exception. Mill River provides the opportunity for all students to go as far as their intellect and their work ethic will take them, in whatever direction they choose to go. It's educated thousands of productive citizens over the years, and it's not stopping now. Haven't many of us in this room had children that have done exactly that? I have. And I'm proud of today's elementary schools in the district, Clarendon, Wallingford, and Shrewsbury. I'm proud of Mill River Union High School and its students, its teachers, and its staff, and its sports teams, and its coaches, and even its school board. So please, we need you to stand up for the school system, to build it, and not to tear it apart. It's time to move on.
My name is Ron Bushy. I've been living in Wallingford since 1973. I was a schoolteacher at Wallingford High School before Mill River was built. Taught there for two years, and I was told I did an excellent job. I actually left a good job in Connecticut to take this one at Wallingford. Some of you folks may know some of the history back then. I wasn't hired at Mill River. I guess I wasn't politically connected the right way. But I thought it was devastating to me at the time. I learned later it was a blessing in disguise. When I was in college in Connecticut, my first roommate was a black man. He was on a track team, and I was on a track team. And that's how I looked at him. My second year in college, my closest roommate, different fella, we were this far apart in our bedrooms, in our bed, same room. He was from Connecticut. He was the fastest quartermiler in New England. I respected him for being such a tremendous athlete. He had some anger in him, because he used to get angry at me because I was white. But I never reciprocated or returned. I always just said, "Okay, that's fine. That's his opinion." The high school I graduated from, I should have started this first, was in Nashville, New Hampshire. There were over 500 graduating students. There were only two black males in that whole graduating class, both superb athletes. And I respected them tremendously for their ability, what they did. All this, I'm trying to give you a little background of who I am and where I came from. I don't believe I'm racist, and no one's ever called me that, but I do firmly believe that the flag out here is the American flag and maybe the Vermont State flag, if it's there. So that's probably everything in a nutshell. I do really appreciate hearing everybody's point of view here. I learn a lot. Once you turn 70, you don't stop learning, and I always want to learn something new every day. And I have, and I've learned... I have, and I've learned different points of view, and very intelligent-sounding people expressing those points of view. And I think I'm a better person for hearing someone else that thinks different than me. I don't get angry at them for thinking differently, and I'll be glad to work with anybody that has a different view than I do. So that's it.
Carol Geary.
Evening. I'm Carol Geary. I'm from Clarendon. I'm here to comment on the inclusion statement and the district equity work on tonight's agenda. I support both, as Mill River schools continue their journey towards being a safe place with equitable opportunities for all. The louder the backlash, the greater the need. As a resident of Clarendon for the past 35 years and a former employee of the school district, I know this work has actually been going on for decades, but only recently has become a flashpoint. I wonder why? Not really. For the past four years, I've passed a painted sign that tells me that if I'm not supporting Trump, I'm not supporting America. The first thing people see entering our community from the airport is a House sign that says, "F. Biden." During the recent school board election, I was called a Marxist Communist Socialist, because I expressed the belief that the school board should act independently and non-politically. I was accused of being un-American because of who I voted for in the election. I know this is a nationwide problem, but it breaks my heart to see it happening here. I have to believe that these folks are in the minority despite their loud presence. Less than 10% of eligible voters participated in a special election in last month or whenever it was. So I'm happy that we have our unified school district to prevent small vocal groups of residents from politicizing our schools. They are attempting to prevent our students from becoming informed students, citizens, I'm sorry. Meanwhile, town leaders in Clarendon perpetuate the feeling that Mill River schools are doing worse, with one town leader admitting that it's good for his business. Feelings are not facts, so who's responsible? Is it the school board members who give up their personal time to serve their communities while being harangued about their work? Is it the administrators, teachers, and staff who work their hearts out every day? Is it the students, some of whom have trauma and experiences we will never know about? Is it the parents who want their children to have a safe experience when they attend school, no matter their identity? Really, who's making it worse? How can we hope that our schools be considered welcoming and inclusive places when some Clarendon town leaders and our state representative see everything through a political eye and are antagonistic towards citizens who have differing views? Regarding the ongoing "All Lives Matter" response to the Black Lives Matter flag, this refrain is a distraction that limits the conversation regarding the struggles of people of color in housing, education, healthcare, employment throughout our history. The same people who use this phrase criticize our target groups, such as refugees on our southern border, the homeless in our streets, people with mental illness or substance abuse issues, trans people who are being denied basic freedoms, and I could go on. Responding to Black Lives Matter with "All Lives Matter" derails the specific conversation about racism experienced by black people and shuts down this moment, this important discussion. I worry about my property value declining because of the cultivation of intolerance than more, I worry more about my property value declining because of the cultivation of intolerance than because the school will be flying the Black Lives Matter flag. In conclusion, for those who regard equity and inclusion as political, I will remind them that no party affiliations are designated when school board members run for office. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Carol. Meadows Squire.
Hello. I'm here tonight. I am the person who put the inclusion statement forward to the board. I've been juggling farm and kids and a grandma and kittens today, so I don't have as much prepared as I had hoped to. But I will first say thank you to the board for your work on the flag issue. I'm not here to speak on that. I will just say thank you for the hard work. I think it's clear that this is an important discussion for our community to be having. But I'm here tonight about the school putting forth in a statement of inclusion. I grew up here. I went to school here at Mill River. I have two kids, a five-year-old and a two-year-old. My family is from here. I have every reason to feel very much that I should belong in this room, but I'm very nervous right now. I'm white. I'm straight. But I can only imagine how other people feel standing here and why we don't see them standing here, speaking. We have a lot of work to do, and I hope that the board will consider adopting a policy of inclusion, so that everyone can feel comfortable coming here and speaking, and feel welcome in this building, I think. I hope my kids, if they get to be here, they will be here, but that they would feel comfortable in this building. I am here speaking for other parents of small children who can't be here, because they have busy lives and it's hard to be here. But I know that there are a lot of people who can't physically be here in this room who feel strongly about this issue. And I know that there are a lot of families who don't feel comfortable in this room, in front of this community. And I just hope that we can all work together to create
20 seconds.
Sorry. An environment that encourages our students to be kind, to be forward-thinking, critical thinkers, and I think that that's the job of the board, is to be looking out for our students and their families. Thank you.
Riley Usher.
Hi, my name is Riley. Sorry, I have allergies right now. I just graduated from Mill River this past June. I've always gone to Mill River. I went to Clarendon Elementary and Tinmouth Elementary. I personally don't think that worrying about the flag is really an issue, because at school during the day, it's not the issue. It's not what's talked about at school. It's not what's talked about during class hours or in the hallways or at lunch. It's never talked about. So I don't see why it has to be such a big issue to the parents and to the staff if it's not an issue for the students. I think putting the students first should be more of a priority than putting the flag first, and making the kids happy rather than the parents happy.
Well, that closes our speakers on a great point, having a student speak.
This is the guy who always put down his, who didn't put down his talent, probably.
Who?
Oh, Mike Clapson.
Mike, is that your, did you sign up?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll show you your handwriting. I would never have guessed that, but feel free to come to the podium. Now that I see it, it could be a K.
I could sign up.
Sorry that this information. We thought our selectman's admin clerk did get it to you, but probably my handwriting. You're right. Bob Bixby and Mike Clapson, we are select board members in the town of Clarendon. First of all, I just want to make everyone aware that I am, because there was a lot of conversation about veterans and stuff, I am a combat veteran of Vietnam, Marine Corps. I served '67, '68 during the Tet Offensive. And my opinion, solely my opinion, is unlike some folks who spoke here tonight, All Lives Matter. I learned before I was 21 years old that everybody bleeds red. So that's all I'm going to say on that. One of our biggest problems at the select board level is the lack of communication between the school and the town of Clarendon. I know that we have four representatives here. It used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been on the board 31 years, and Bob is close to that, we used to have communication between the school board and the select board periodically. We used to get either written reports or a representative of the town would come and speak if there was issues. I think George Ambrose could speak to that. He
He left.
Oh, then again, he can't speak to it. Probably has a joke on it anyway. But anyway, going forward, we would appreciate it if at least once a month, we can either have one of our representatives come to a meeting, or a school report that we can post around town, or at least at the town hall.
I'd like to men.
Yes. Thanks, John. I'll see you outside. But that is one of our main concerns. We also have a concern that when the unified district was presented to the town and to voters, it was, I think, one of the bigger talking points was that our taxes would go down. That has not happened, and we are wondering what we can do, or what you folks can do, to get this under control. The other thing is, and I just wanted to wind down with this, is that the select board is going to probably in March, put a non-binding article out to the voters to see if they want to get out of this union. So I just wanted, Bob, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, other than that the full select board, we are all thinking in the same terms, more or less. There's few differences of opinion, but I agree totally with what was written here tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian, can we turn the thermostat up?
Liz is freezing.
I'm freezing.
Request to turn the heat up.
Carrie, I don't even know where it is. She's cold.
Could we have a two-minute break, please, for everybody to just get up and scratch? I don't know how many people are staying in the rest of the meeting.
I'm freezing.
Okay. We are going to move to bids for review and approval. Brian or Jody, which would you, which should go first?
I'm here. I'll start.
Oh, I'm looking over here to see where you are. Brian?
Snuck out of the, snuck out of the shadows. So I've got two that I had sent to Ann to be included with the materials, so hopefully folks have had a chance to look at those. I'm going to start with the one that's got the two Renaissance Learning items on there. This is one that is a kind of interesting one, so I tried to give the board a good bit of context on this, because the way our policy reads, for a purchase over $15,000, we bring it to the board to get approval. This was something that was quoted at over $15,000, but it actually is two separate products that had never been quoted together before. And actually, there was an acquisition of a company, so that now one company has both these products. So just to, I think, be clear, that if anybody is looking at bills and they see something over $15,000, they don't go, "Hold on, how come this didn't come to the board?" We did want to bring this to you, if that makes sense. These are two products that we're going to continue to use, we plan on, for at least the short-term future, if not the next handful of years, for sure. Any questions about either of those products, or how those ended up on the same quote? Okay. I would ask for a motion from the board to approve those, payment on those quotes, accepting those quotes, that bid.
So moved.
Just going to let Brian run this part.
Do you want me to call the question, too?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So is there further discussion? Okay, if there is, and Brian, you don't want to add anything else?
Nope, not for that one.
Then I will call the question. Will we accept Brian's recommendations for the tech purchase? Please raise your hand if you're voting aye.
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 Okay, any nays? I think everybody voted yes. Okay, thank you. That was unanimous?
Second one. This is something that I've brought to the board before, an E-Rate purchase, which is a federal grant program that goes through the FCC, something that we access and takes roughly almost about a year from planning and initial putting in for the grant to get approval and actually get down the road to where we purchase. These are large purchases, because we get a fairly sizable reimbursement from the FCC through USAC, the school division. So this purchase is fairly sizable. We had three bids, and we followed all the bidding procedures through the E-Rate program. My recommendation would be that we purchase from Whaley Computer Associates, because their pricing was better. We have worked with that vendor in the past, and they have delivered on what they've promised to us. This is a fairly sizable upgrade to our wireless system, which is due. We dabbled in this a little bit last year with E-Rate funding. Things went really well, so we're shifting and we're continuing with that phase-out of old equipment and bringing in new equipment. So I would ask the board make a motion to approve the purchase of these devices and licenses from Whaley Computer Associates.
BJ?
So moved.
And Samantha, second. Okay, is there any, does anybody have any questions for Brian or a comment? Okay, then I'll just call the question. Do we approve the quote for Whaley Computer Associates presented by Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. That was everybody. Okay, thank you. That was unanimous.
Hey, thank you, everybody. It's great to see you back in the room together. It's nice.
And thank you for doing the YouTube thing. That was great. Now we have Jody.
Hi. First time doing this, so tell me if I get something wrong. So requesting approval for a bid for classroom literacy sets for our elementary classrooms. These are sets of leveled texts, so groups of books at the reading levels that students progress through as they learn to read. Having classroom sets that are clearly labeled in a large system helps our educators, because they can run small groups, they can easily pull books for kiddos who are working through the sets. We have some, but having a set that's really tied together, and we don't have enough in every school, will really benefit our early literacy strategies. The set that we'd like to go with through Heinemann also includes teacher guides and a bunch of learning resources and materials. The reason that we chose Heinemann was because it is the least expensive bid of the three bids that we found, but also this set is from Fontis and Penel, which is the assessment system that we use in our classrooms to judge where kids are in their reading levels, and it is also the phonics system that we already use in our elementary schools. So that continuity of plan just makes the most sense to make sure that we're giving our kiddos the best that we can.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to
So moved.
Thank you, Liz. Second, Sam? Does anybody have any questions for Jody or comments on her suggestion, proposal? Nope. Okay, I'm calling the question. All aye, everybody who All aye, everybody who wants to vote aye.
Aye.
Have to get that question down. BJ, I'm sympathetic. Okay, unanimous.
Thanks.
Heinemann, thank you. Okay.
Board retreat scheduling.
Yeah, we're going to talk about a retreat again. We had to cancel the last one because we still have some questions on the board about what could be included and what was allowable under open meeting law. For the public, we just underwent an hour-long training with the executive director of the Vermont School Boards Association to better understand open meeting law. So nonetheless, I would like to discuss scheduling a retreat. It would be great if we could get it in the summer, I don't know if that's possible. I'm opening this up for conversation. I'll let you all look at your calendars.
Yes.
Mine's very colorful.
So is mine. So...
Are we still thinking a Saturday morning?
Well, that's up for conversation.
With bagels?
Are people still thinking of a Saturday morning? I think that's really the easiest way for us all to find a time that we can all attend.
And I'll definitely have to say not August 14th, that is when our last campers go home.
Oh, it's like, okay.
Our family is there, so I'll start, but at least going on a, no thank you to them.
And I guess I'll thank you to August 7th, because I'm not in town.
Okay. How is the 21st striking people? We can also move into the beginning of the school year, but I would like...
What's the first day of school again? September?
9-1. September 1st.
Oh, okay. I thought you were just, sorry.
We're number one.
I know, now that we're not, okay.
Oh, does, August 21st, Bruce, are you free from camp responsibilities?
I'm finished after the 14th.
Okay. Oh, so everybody has the last day. Okay, good, okay. So can we schedule the 21st? Okay. And now we get to a topic, I think, go ahead.
Just a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And maybe a clarification, because we had that open meeting.
Okay, right.
The retreat would be warned and open to the public.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to set so that people...
An agenda will come out. I would like to continue with our initial idea of having some social time and then moving into a discussion of the district goals as they are now, and maybe identifying whether anything should be changed, whether anything should be refocused, whether, you know, work just needs to be done. I mean, there, you know, we should look at these on a regular basis, and we do have a number of new members who would like to weigh in, I'm sure. So could you all put on your calendars the 21st at 9 o'clock and I'll send around an email for, or you can all just continue with what you were going to put in the last time.
We talked about this space, you want to do this space for that?
Yes.
So we're going to do here?
We're going to do...
Okay.
And we're allowed to have food in this space? Yeah, okay. Sometimes libraries are like, no food.
We're the board.
What's that?
We're the board.
But we still have to ask permission.
Oh, we're the board, sorry.
But I think they'll want us to have food, because we'll promise not to spill food.
Because if we do spill, we're going to blame it on Dave.
Yeah, we can't go against the rules, Adrian.
Yeah, this was a joke, I'm sorry. So 9 o'clock, the 21st, we'll be very careful.
We'll start in cafeteria.
We'll eat on the sidewalk.
What do you all get?
Cafeteria. Fine, being outside.
Unless somebody else has something more to say about that, we'll have at least one more meeting beforehand so we can fine tune. If anything else, we can move on with our agenda for tonight. Is that okay with everybody?
And can I just ask at the board retreat, who is going to present the district goals?
We will discuss that.
Okay, great.
And now, and we can always add to the agenda too, if you want to look at the equity goals or what, excuse me, bylaws. And bylaws, I mean something, whatever. But come with your ideas, I guess, to the next meeting. And now we will move on to district equity work, because we moved that around on the agenda. Hi, Jody, thank you.
So this is just a brief presentation based on your request for a conversation around the equity work that we're doing and how it may or may not relate to CRT. So I want to start by saying that we're committed to listening to our students when they tell us what they need. That comes for equity work and all of our work. We are here to serve them, and that is our, always needs to be our primary goal. That what we're do, when we're doing our equity work, we're hoping to create opportunities for every child in our schools to feel happy, welcomed, loved, and represented. And so that doesn't mean excluding others to make more people feel represented, that means everyone feels represented. What this looks like is making sure that our books, our decorations, the things that we see in our schools represent our community and our world, and that there are positive stories of success and leadership that represent all of the identities that our students hold. We're committed to our definition of educational equity, and that is equity means that each student receives the resources and educational opportunities they need to learn and thrive. We do want to work on examining our identity and our biases because that helps us better serve students. And again, we as teachers are committed to constantly learning so that we can better serve kids. Our equity plan is transparent, it is available on our website, it's available to everybody, it's designed to support, educate, and care for all of our kids and to provide school staff with opportunities to learn more. CRT is a theory to explore race as a social construct and to explore racism in systems. It is not taught in Mill River Public Schools, there is not a plan to teach it in Mill River Public Schools. It is a graduate-level theory taught in graduate schools and law schools. We do not have the expertise to teach that to Mill River Public School students, and it wouldn't be appropriate for their age levels. We do believe that teaching kids to be critical thinkers is central to providing them with the education they need to be responsible community members and our future neighbors. Teaching kids to be critical thinkers means really teaching them to take a variety of viewpoints and materials and to look at those and make their own meaning from them, to look at facts, to look at multiple sources, and to really think hard about what they are being presented. That is the opposite of indoctrination, teaching our kids to be critical thinkers, and that is a commitment that we have at our schools. Sometimes equity work means focusing on how to remove barriers for a specific group, but removing those barriers helps all of our students. For example, if I was on recess duty at one of our elementary schools and there was a kiddo that was crying and three other kids playing happily, I would walk up to the kiddo who was crying and ask them what was wrong and listen to them. If COVID wasn't going on, probably give them a good hug. It doesn't mean that I care any less for the other three that are playing happily, they don't need my hug, and they don't probably want my attention because they're busy playing. But it benefits them if I make the other student feel better, because then their classmate is happy and all four can play together and they're all having a better time. Another example I could give is if we had a, the highest-level math course at Mill River, and we could only seat 25 students in it, but our data showed that we had 35 students that could take that math course, we would create another section of that math course. That would mean taking some other section away, but it would be meeting the needs of all of our students, and we would make sure that we were doing what was best for everybody. One important reason we teach history is so that we can learn from and hopefully not repeat our mistakes. Our country is made up of people, I am not perfect, most people are not. There are imperfect things in our history that we do need to teach, and some of those do touch on racism, things like the Civil Rights Movement, the Civil War, the Holocaust, Japanese internment. Discrimination is a part of their stories. We also teach all of the wonderful successes and triumphs and amazing things about our country as well. But we have to teach all of this because we're teaching students who are not perfect. And when we teach them how mistakes get made and then get fixed and then get reflected upon, we teach them to be their best selves as well. That's all I have to say, but I'm really happy to answer any of the board's questions.
Just a quick question, and I've heard a lot about this lately, so I don't know. The 1619 project that was in the New York Times, the author was surprised for commentary, is that being used at the schools?
No. So we teach our performance indicators. Our curriculum is available on the website. The performance indicators are the things that we teach. Teachers use a variety of content to teach those performance indicators. I am not currently aware of anyone using that project.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll make the comment. Thank you very much for your report, Jody, and I'm sure that we'll develop more questions for you later. And I'm hoping that perhaps you, I don't know if you're available on the 21st, but as part of our goals, conversation and, you know, we have, going through what we have now, I think it would probably be helpful if you were there for at least a short period of time.
Well, I heard I get to eat in the library, so I will be happy to attend.
And I hope it's not like a big, bad thing that I joked about, you know, have to deal with Karen McCullough.
Yes, I'm always happy to be wherever the board would like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we were going to touch on the statement of inclusion.
I have just 30 seconds to get it.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. At the last meeting, I asked the board whether they were interested in developing an inclusion statement and that we would address it at the next meeting, which is where we are now. And Meadows Squire had submitted something that Tinmouth, I think the select board, was working on, and she gave us the version that they were, you know, in the process of working with. And Dave has also found a couple of other inclusion statements for us to look at. I personally think it would be a good thing for us to do, to make clear to everybody that everybody is included with, you know, in our...
I'm so excited, I can see it.
So I will open this up for basically just a, you know, a free conversation for the moment. Everybody would read through the different inclusion statements that are up on the board, and then we can talk about what we want to do or not do.
Yeah, so just for the context for the group, there are three samples just for the board to consider. These are only samples, they're not, they're not a recommendation. The first is from the Rutland City Board of Aldermen. I did get this documentation straight from the town clerk's office or the city clerk's office. The second possible proposal here is the one that was submitted by Meadows Squire, school district resident. And Adrian, I'm wondering, for the sake of the audience, if you want me to read through these, I'd be happy to do so. And then the final is just from a, it's a statement of inclusion from a public K-12 district in the Midwest. This district happens to be in Illinois, which some of you know is where I'm from. This is not a district that I have any connection or affiliation to, just a simple Google search found this information to review. So Adrian, would you, would you want me to read through the things?
Sure, I think that would be helpful, because I'm not sure if everybody can read them.
So the Rutland City statement, they actually call it a declaration for what's that, that's worth, as opposed to a statement. The city of Rutland condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression, age, or disability, and will protect, sorry, there's a typo there, protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. As a city, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms and commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone, not every "I" in the community. The city of Rutland has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions. The proposed statement that was submitted by district resident says the following, "The Mill River Unified Union School District upholds a culture of inclusion and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, political affiliation, ancestry, place of origin, marital status, income, wealth, sexual orientation, age, familial status, veteran status, disability, gender identity, and gender expression, and will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. As a district, we commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community and formally condemn discrimination in all of its forms." Again, I think the town of Timmott is contemplating something like this, I don't know where that stands, I'm not sure.
They formally adopted it.
They formally adopted it?
Yeah.
That one in particular, pretty close?
No, they did some wordsmithing. I think you want to stay, sorry, you may want to stay away from, you know, using quasi-judicial law enforcement verbiage in a non-binding resolution.
Thanks for that feedback, appreciate it. And finally, this is from, again, just a K-12 district in the Midwest called District 39, believes inclusion plays a vital role in student growth. We are committed to providing a safe and equitable learning environment that fosters a mindset of empathy, respect, and belonging for all district students and staff. By respecting each person's unique identity, perspective, and learning style, we create a stronger community. We honor differences including races and cultures, genders and sexualities, abilities and aspirations, identities and affiliations, socioeconomics, and worldviews. Embracing diversity prepares our students to thrive in an increasingly complex global community."
Did they have a title for that?
Yeah, they called theirs a statement of inclusion as well. So Rutland City called it a declaration, and then others would say it was a statements.
Can we move back to the middle one, just out of... So right now, are we considering whether or not to adopt a statement of inclusion or... Or whether we'd like to work on one? I think what had, what had been forwarded to, you know, to this agenda was to look at statements of inclusion and to further clarify whether we wanted to work on one. And I, I mean, personally, I think that might be a good retreat topic. And I'm not sure how capable we all are currently at this time of night to really hash this out. I know, I'm feeling a little...
My one comment is I like the positivity that 39, the very bottom one, provides, whereas the city of Rutland seems very negative to start off with.
Can you go back up to the city of Rutland one?
Yep.
In the first line...
Yeah. I don't like that word. Makes me think of a home, it's full of a bird.
I guess, seeing that there's not a whole lot of comment, would you forward all of those to us, and would everyone agree that this might be a good topic for the retreat?
Yeah.
Give everyone a little more time.
Or even next.
Meeting?
Meeting.
Would you put it on the agenda? It might take another meeting and the retreat to come up with something.
Then that's okay if we spend like five minutes at the next meeting, kind of looking at it.
Right, well, the next meeting also has a fairly heavy agenda, too, so...
Even if we touch and say, okay, we're not ready and we're going to discuss that retreat, you know?
I would love it if every, you know, if people either tweak these or found something that they like better or write something that they like better and bring it to us, and we can certainly put it on the next agenda. But I wanted to start the conversation, I guess, do we have a consensus that we would at least like to work on an inclusion statement? Yes, that seems to be a majority of the board. Okay. Dave, thank you for carrying that, even if we're not really going to do much with it today. I appreciate it. Thank you. We still have committee business.
Who?
He just happened to be back to work.
No, I didn't see it either. Okay, personnel is up first. Are you ready to walk us through contracts?
Yes, absolutely. Personnel committee event tonight, and we have a couple of requests for board action. I'd like to start by introducing Maggie Ains, who has gone through the interview process. There's Maggie. Went through the interview process with you and Jody, and then came to David and I. That's the last step of the process, and so we, everybody felt that Maggie would be a good fit here. I want to give Maggie an opportunity to introduce...
I want to give Maggie an opportunity to introduce herself, and if board members have any questions, now's the time to ask. So Maggie, welcome.
Good evening. This is past my bedtime, so I apologize if I'm not really on right now. So I've been working in the Mill River School District for the past seven years. I'm currently the Assistant Director of Student Services, and I'm based out of Mill River. So I've been here in the high school, working with middle school and high school students and families. When I first started here, I worked as a resource room teacher, providing special education services, and the 504 Coordinator, making sure students have access to the general ed curriculum in their classroom and in the school. Since then, you know, I have been working towards a principalship endorsement, as well as a director in special education endorsement. My heart really lies in working with students and families. So seeing the Shrewsbury opportunity as a good next step for myself to try on some principal shoes over the next year while keeping, you know, being able to still be here and still have a presence in special education is super exciting for me, to see if that's the overall role that I want to go forward in in the future. I don't know if you guys have any questions, or...
You know, just from, and I won't speak for Lan or Adrian or Jody, but in looking at the Shrewsbury principalship, you know, there are a couple of factors that we just want to look at. As one thing is, we want to contemplate what the appropriate FTE for that role is. If you look at our schools that have less enrollment, you know, we need to figure out where the sweet spot is on what the FTE is, and how do you appropriately keep someone in full-time work with possibly putting together different types of FTEs. So Maggie and her abilities in the special ed realm, as well as interest in the principalship, is a really nice pairing to help us sort that out. When we're looking at someone for an interim principal at Shrewsbury, you know, you have to give credit to Jody. She's a tough act to follow, in terms of being the principal up in Shrewsbury and connecting with the community and connecting with a school that runs very, very well because of what the folks up there have done. But one thing we know about Maggie is Maggie is thorough, Maggie is thoughtful, Maggie is someone that we trust to make good, wise, thoughtful decisions. And I'm excited, you know, we always get excited internally about developing people into those types of roles, and it really excites me to be able to see Maggie, you know, progressing on that path. So definitely internally is something we're pleased with. And I think it also gives, Maggie mentioned us, and it gives her an opportunity to kind of get her feet wet in terms of the administrative piece, so... And Jody, I'm pretty sure will be around, so that'll be a huge help as well. Any other questions? Seeing none, then what I would like to do is make a motion to approve a contract for Maggie Ains as a .6 FTE interim principal at Shrewsbury Mountain School and a .4 full-time equivalency Assistant Director of Student Services. Sam?
I'll second that.
Doesn't matter. Liz?
Give it to Matt.
Okay, Matt, you're up. I've been missing you all night long, anyway.
Just do it, it's okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Still holding my head up.
Abstained. Congratulations, Maggie.
Congratulations, Maggie.
Thanks for staying up past your bedtime.
I know.
Next, I need a motion to approve a contract for, I'll make a motion to approve a contract for Carrie Clancy, a .4 full-time equivalency math teacher at Shrewsbury Mountain School. Sam, second that. Discussion? Questions?
I guess I had a question. Carrie lives in Shrewsbury, right?
Yes. So Carrie had long-term connections to Shrewsbury, moved here with her family last year, has subbed in our school, has a very successful history in the classroom, excellent references. I can speak highly of her.
As you tell, she comes highly recommended by me. So, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving a contract for Carrie Clancy, a .4 full-time equivalency math teacher at Shrewsbury, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Next, approve a contract for Ann Reed, .2 full-time equivalency music teacher at Tinmouth... Tin... Tinmouth. Just getting like, Tinmouth? School. Got it.
Can you second?
Matt seconded that, okay. Discussion? Just so folks know, Ann has been involved with, in various capacities, in different districts around music, so she's come back to Tinmouth, actually. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Good, okay. Just a few more. Approve contract for Tracy Spencer, a 1.0 full-time equivalency Principal's Administrative Assistant here at Mill River Union High School. I made that motion. Matt will second it. Discussion? Moving right along. All those in favor of approving a contract for Tracy Spencer, 1.0 full-time equivalency Principal's Administrative Assistant at Mill River, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one. Approve a contract for Kristy Duncan, 1.0 full-time equivalency LPN at Wallingford Elementary School and Tinmouth Mountain School, and I make that a motion. And Sam seconds that. Thank you, Sam. Discussion? Questions? All those in favor of the contract for Kristy Duncan, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And lastly, approve a contract for Kathley Manley, 1.0 full-time equivalency General Education Paraeducator at Clarendon Elementary School. I'd make that a motion. And Matt's going to second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, the next, the next Personnel Committee meeting, now we met at 5:00 tonight, and then we had the training. So, but our next meeting will be at 5:30 on August 4th. It'll be in the conference room. And again, that time's a little different. We're going to do 5:30 Personnel Committee, and then at 6:00 Personnel will go into Executive Session to discuss exit interviews. So that's the way that's going to work, just so you have that in advance. 5:30, the regular meeting, and 6:00, we'll go into Executive Session to discuss those exit interviews. We did two.
So that's the full board?
And we did, oh yeah, the full board is invited, I'm sorry.
Yes.
As you always are.
And requested, actually.
But actually, yeah, we'd like everybody to be there, so, I mean, not everybody participated in the exit interviews, so we'd like to share that information and let everybody take a look at it. Give us feedback as well. And with that, I believe I am done.
Cool, thank you very much. Policy. BJ?
Hey. You know, finally getting back together in person. We were hoping to have transportation policy for this meeting, but we finally got together in person, and then we got back into our old routine of talking about the policies and wordsmithing, and honestly, it was a lot of fun, so I appreciated it. Needless to say, we don't have the transportation policy quite done yet, so hopefully that'll get done at our next meeting, which is scheduled for the, the second Tuesday is the 10th of August at 5:30.
Even though that transportation policy's not done, some of the things that are in that policy are already moving, so for those of you who are parents of current students, you know, we've got the survey out to families to try to gather the more precise information about who intends to ride the bus, where they are, so that we can design the best routes possible, and the, some of the criteria that we're looking at in the policy, we're just mentally applying that to our planning and thinking. So trying to be in line with where that policy's going when it's all said and done.
So you have nothing else?
No.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. Buildings and grounds, Doug?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since the last we had that we got approved of and stuff, but we will be doing one on the 3rd of August, which is within three weeks or so when school starts. Hopefully, if we have any need of anything that needs to be done, we can sort of do it kind of quickly, get it back to us. Carrie's been a pretty good godsend. I was walking through the building, and I'm at that point where you swear they're not going to be ready to have school open, but I'm sure everybody knows what's going to happen. It's like little munchkins come in and everything puts together the day before. But Carrie's got a good group of guys.
Well, thank you. Community engagement.
Oh, Karen, thank you. I apologize for not being able to be present at the meeting last week, but there are people here who were, so would anyone like to just recap what we talked about, what was talked about? Liz, you took notes, is that right?
Oh, my gosh. I'm so brain-dead right now. I'm sure I took notes, I don't have them...
I have, I have access to them. So the most important thing is that the next meeting is right on the heels of policy on August 10th, at 6:30, we will be meeting here in the conference room. And the community conversations, which we had one of this week, but we didn't have anyone sign up for it, which is fine, it doesn't always work out for everybody. We're still going to continue as scheduled. People are welcome to come and have a more frank conversation with a few board members about any issues that they would like to learn more about that we've worked on. And that will be, should I ensure it down, on August 16th at 6:30 PM, that's a Monday. Just a moment, I'll pull up those minutes, and I will let you know.
If you want, I had sent you that quick email about what we had talked about, so I'll just, we talked generally about the lack of participation, starting coffee hours when school starts, and whether or not we were going to stay virtual through the summer and then start in-person meetings in September when school starts.
And that was the community conversation?
Right, that was, that was the community engagement meeting, talking about the conversations. Yes.
We also talked about...
You're welcome.
...the potential, I received some information from the School Boards Association in terms of email and social media, and I was going to...
Yeah, that's right, we started talking.
Yeah, and I'll put together, I volunteered to put together some kind of official thing that we can take a look at the next meeting. We also talked about community surveys, the possibility of doing something with those.
As well as our self-coverage of what's in the...
Oh, yeah.
See, we talked about a lot.
Yeah, great, in-person meetings, very efficient. More efficient than...
So who, do you have a list of who is on for the next community conversation?
I do. I'll get that for you, I thought that was the only one I was going to get. I apologize for not having that right this minute. I just, while I'm looking for it, I will just remind everyone that the difference between a community conversation and a community engagement meeting, the engagement meeting is a board meeting with an agenda, a specific time for public comment, and otherwise, we're talking about how to make the board more, to increase the board's capacity for engagement, to make us more available in a realistic way, considering we all have other things we have that we're doing too, but we care about being engaged with the community because that's who we represent. So...
The XOendo, the digital schedule has Adrian and Asha down for the 19th. I don't know, so I don't know if somebody signed up, not through that.
Yeah, they didn't. There's another version of this, that's... Come back, uh, come back to me. When we get to other business, I will have it, but I don't...
Okay, no, that's fine. Finance, please.
All right. So, we have the following pay orders and payroll for approval this evening. For pay orders, I have from the general fund in the amount of $7,554.84. Also from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $47,547.47. From after-school program, actually, those previous general fund pay orders are marked fiscal year '21. The follow, the next, does this make sense? Standard dated '22?
Yeah, we're in fiscal year '21.
Oh, duh. Oh, my gosh. It's July. Okay, here we go. From ASP, we have for fiscal year '22, so this is the new fiscal year, we have a pay order in the amount of $1,300 from the general fund. We have a pay order in the amount of $1,395.29. And also from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $283,063.62, for a total So now for payroll, okay. Payroll dated 6:30, I'm sorry, dated June 18th, regular payroll in the amount of $2,086,621.89. Dated June 25th, regular payroll in the amount of $6,993.49. Sorry, I scrolled too much, give me a sec. For a grand total of $2,093,615.38. And, no, I don't need that. And finally, payroll dated July 2nd, in the amount of $110,743.34. Also dated July 2nd, payroll in the amount of $5,958.18. Dated July 6th, payroll in the amount of $2,231.66. Dated July 16th, payroll in the amount of $112,755.64. Payroll dated July 16th, in the amount of $30,435.66. And finally, July, dated July 19th, payroll, actually, this is a payout in the amount And the grand total here is $291,911.94. And I move that we accept and approve payroll as, and the pay orders as presented.
So moved? Or seconded?
It was long tonight. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Doug, did you have a chance?
Yeah, went through, as far as I could tell, there was really, there's nothing really wrong at all in there. Everything's right in order. It's towards the end of the year, so we're doing the last of the teachers' checks that gone through. Some of the things that were left over from the course of the summer, of course, of the spring, has been taken care of through that, too. Everything seems to be great.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anything, stop that.
The abstentions. Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Oh, and our next Finance Committee meeting is August 23rd at 4:30.
Thank you. We are down to the TransAct Other Legal Business. Does anybody have anything to bring up?
I have a question. Going through some of the things, I've noticed that there are a large number of, well, I don't know, let me rephrase that. There are a few, few of our, this is crazy stuff here. For our policies and stuff, don't have the signatures of the board chair. Is that something that we are required to do? Do anybody have any idea? It's, it's adopted, of course, and it's listed as adopted, but it's normally is a spot for the chair to sign off.
So, our policies that are posted on the website are just the documents?
Okay.
The original documents. The policies that are in the official policy manual that is kept in the paper policy... The policies that are in the official policy manual that is kept in the paper policy manual, if you will, kept in the district office, those are signed off by the board chair.
Okay, that, thank you, helps me out.
Helps me, too. And I should know the answer.
Community conversation on August 16th, that's 6:30. I have Adrian, Asha, and Matt, which is three of you, so if one of you has to bow up, um, stand, and we'll talk about who is going to take the lead on inviting people at the next meeting.
I have, I think for Gary, mowing. The spot that is behind Clarendon Elementary, that's that little, like, part of the field that, the walking, is that, are we responsible to mow? Is the school responsible to mow that, or is that a private?
It's part of the school. How we're addressing that, we're still discussing.
Okay, because I had a community complaint about how long the grass was, and they were losing their dogs. I just didn't know, I wasn't sure.
You're talking about the new field area that was just...
Yeah, that one that's like a mile or whatever. Okay, so I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Fair enough. Um, anybody else have anything? Otherwise, we will go to agenda building. We have the inclusion statement. I'm sure I'm the same.
I heard something mentioned about maybe some brief discussion about how we're going to look at the goals for the retreat, like just what the process is going to be?
Yeah, that's true. The retreat in general.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Is the community engagement thing at 6:00 or 7:00?
It's 6:30. The child community engagement related, that's what I found, 6:30.
So is there anything else to put on the agenda that anybody is aware of? Okay.
Um, yes, central office reports and administrative reports?
Oh, well, yeah, other than standards, sorry, I wasn't going through the whole, just extra stuff.
And then I missed, I missed something in other business.
The inclusion statement, discussing that.
Yes, the inclusion statement and the retreat.
Yeah, no, I missed something in other business. If, when we're done with agenda building, if you'd be willing to backtrack...
Oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying. Okay, we're going back to other business.
Only if you're done with agenda building.
Nobody was saying anything. I apologize.
Thank you for indulging me. I want to, I want to put one of our new administrators on the spot. Kalen Thompson is back there. Hi, Kalen, if you'd wave. So we virtually hired Kalen as the new Assistant Principal at Mill River. Kalen started July 1st, and just hopped right in with both feet, so, yeah, you can stand up, Kalen, it's okay. We'll get you on camera.
You have to turn on the camera.
Want to give you a chance just to say hello to the group, if you'd like.
Welcome, we'll see you next meeting.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you said that. Okay, we have executive session if required, but I don't believe we have one, do we?
No need.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And they made it, and there's a...
Maria seconded.
Okay, and is there...
Is everybody in favor?
Yes. Thank you very much.